Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, March 28th at 6:30. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing afterwards for a moment of silence.
Oh God, our Father, we gather this evening to say thank you for your blessings on this community, to thank you for your goodness and your kindness. And Father, we thank you for those who serve and protect, for the men and women in this room who serve and guide this community. Father, again, we plead for the outpouring of wisdom and knowledge as decisions are made and plans are made for continued growth. We pray for our families to grow strong, for children to thrive and to grow strong as well. Thank you, Lord, for these moments, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Hardaway, lead us in the pledge, please.
Our pledge is to lead the nation through the pipeline of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty,
We have Joy filling in for Kelly tonight as our Madam Clerk Treasurer. Would you please call the roll?
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uszalak.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
Councilman Span.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we have the Fraternal Order of Police Contract Signing Ceremony. I'd like to call up to the table here in the front. Ian Davidson Dugan, FOP President, Bradley Urban, FOP Secretary, Chief Costa Nusis, Councilman Minchuck, our Chairman of Public Safety, and Attorneys Joe Svetnov and David Dowling. Joe, say a few words on what we're doing here, the contract and how things went this year.
I'm proud to report tonight that we, the FOP and the town of Maryville successfully negotiated a collective bargaining agreement as between the entities themselves. The negotiations went very smooth. Parties were reasonable. I know Councilman Minchuck had done an extreme amount of work on this. This should be a very proud moment in the town's history because, again, it's going to make sure that both entities are protected on the streets and protected in terms of a contractual view for three years. So it's a long-term contract, and at this time, I fully endorse its being signed tonight.
Great. Could you pass that to Mr. Don for quick comment?
Sure. Thank you. My role in all this is I'm the field rep for the Indiana FOP Labor Council, and the last couple of years, I've been working with all of you in the town of Maryville. And I'm happy to report that, you know, this year, we got this three-year deal done, which is very important. I think it's a good deal for the men and women of the police department as well as the town, and I'm looking forward to continue the strong relationship we built the last couple of years.
All right, guys, you'll see your titles there. Let's sign and pass.
Making Dave do all the legwork.
There we go. Let's pass these down to the attorneys for their records. Thank you, Chief. Just to kind of highlight what the attorney said, I have to say that dealing with the FOP leadership has been a pleasure. As already mentioned, they were reasonable. We were very happy to announce a three-year contract. They're getting a 3% raise each year in the contract, as well as a variety of other amenities and benefits that we were able to do for the FOP, and it makes me feel good to do that. So, did you want to add anything?
I just want to say thanks to the council for being open to some creative ideas that came from our membership, and some of the benefits that we did get really highlight their willingness to focus on officer wellness going forward in the future.
That's great. Thank you all very much, and thank you to the council for approving the contract as we finished it. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
You bet. Good job, Jeff.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Ian, good job.
Congratulations.
Hey, no problem.
Congratulations.
No problem.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Congratulations.
Hey, no problem.
Congratulations.
No problem.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Okay, moving on tonight to the letter from the Town Engineering Administrator, Stephen King, recommending approval of the Core Payment Pact Number Five for the Town Conference Room.
Can we read it again? Okay. So I've reviewed the December 2022 billing for the work completed in the Town Hall Conference Room, and I do concur with Core Construction's recommendation on approving payment for application number five to the vendor's list of below in a total amount of $6,760.43.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
You have a motion by Mr. Pettit.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of application number five. I believe this finishes up the work on the conference room, and I want to personally thank the Redevelopment Commission for paying for the work done in the new conference room. Thank you, guys. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Also tonight, we have a letter from the Town Engineering Administrator, Stephen King, recommending approval of first group engineering for the Community Crossing Grant Project. Steve?
So this is for, so on May 7th, we opened bids for our Community Crossings project. Milestone Contractors North was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at $1,142,824.50. Fifty percent of that amount is going to come from the state for our Community Crossings grant, and the other 50%, we will fund this with our wheel tax. There's three projects here listed, the 86th Avenue project from Maryville Road to McKinley Street, the Broadway frontage roads, the east side from East 84th Place to 91st Avenue, the west side from West 83rd Avenue to 200 feet south of 89th Avenue. So at this time, I recommend that we approve this contract for Milestone for this work.
Still moved, Mr. President?
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit to chair recognize Mrs. Uszalak for the second for approval of the Community Crossing Grant Project. Questions or comments from the council? Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
This actually is for Steve. Actually, I want to say this to the council, because we constantly see wheel tax being used. A lot of that wheel tax is coming on the north end. I haven't seen it. I get complaints about our streets, but I'm constantly seeing the multimillion dollars being spent in other areas. I want to continue to support these things, but there hasn't been a support for what's going on in Ward 7, minimum at the best. My constituents come to me and say, we know, Councilman White, that they're blocking you for doing what's right for us. And I agree. And when I see this here, it's hard for me to say, yeah, I'm going to do something on the other end of town and not do nothing on the north end of town. This is what we've been going through for the past three years. You guys have been sitting on the dollars here, not wanting to make Maryville as a whole town, only what you can get mostly on the south side of US 30. So I am not going to support this because you ain't supporting me or my constituents. But I know the game plan. The game plan is to not give them anything and to make it look like, well, hey, that councilman can't get anything done, so you need somebody else new. But I'm not going to support this until we start seeing wheel tax, because we've got a lot of people out here in this audience right now paying wheel tax and they're not getting the service. Sean, sorry, you get all the wheel tax most of the time, every single thing you need over there.
Any other comments from the council?
I wasn't through, Mr. President.
Oh, please finish up later.
Okay. I just wanted to make that statement as to, and I don't want the council to look the other way, because we've got people out here, because I know, you know, people constantly say, we see them rolling their eyes and, you know, like, what's he hearing? We're talking. Well, I'm never going to stop talking, even if I'm not here. I never stop talking. So that's, I want to start, matter of fact, instead of me complaining, I want you guys to get together and get some money down there. I do, because we pay for license plates, too. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Mr. Span.
I kind of agree with Councilman White. You know, I think things are presented in certain wards, and certain wards, they don't get the same consideration. I kind of don't like that, and I let Mr. King know that very loudly. So I really don't respect what's going on.
Okay. Any other comments? Let's do a roll call, please.
Vice President Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uszalak.
Yes.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Span.
No.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five-two, motion carries. Thank you all. Pat and Steve, can you prepare a list for us, and especially for Mr. White, of where we've spent this grant money in the past three years?
Mr. President?
So we're dealing with facts on it.
Yeah, it's facts. I mean, it's facts. But what I want to like to say, I offered to ask Pat to do that. Did I not? And I'm still waiting, right? You kind of told me to go down to Kelly's office and ask them to do it. Well, yeah, you might not remember that. But I need that. The community, the public needs to see how these dollars are being spent. So, you know, people won't make a statement as to, those may not be the facts, but they are. So, thank you, Mr. President. That's it. I'm beating a dead horse on this, yeah. That's it for me.
Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the Accounts Payable Register voucher approval for March 28th and the approval of the Town Council Meeting Minutes of March 14th.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Uszalak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pettit for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committee reports, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street Department, Mr. Minchuck.
No report, other than I know we had a few items come up at our workshop. I'll be sitting with Steve next week. We'll just have a chat, talk about a few things. That's all.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Every second Sunday in May, letter carriers in more than 10,000 cities and towns across America collect the goodness and compassion of their postal customers who participate in the NALC Stamp Out Hunger National Food Drive, the largest one-day food drive in the nation, led by letter carriers represented by the National Association of Letter Carriers, AFL-CIO, with help from rural letter carriers, other postal employees, and other volunteers. The drive has delivered more than 1 billion pounds of food in the past 25 years. Carriers collect nonperishable food donations left by mailboxes and in post offices and deliver them to local community food banks, pantries, and shelters. Nearly 1,500 NALC branches in all 50 states, the District Columbia, Puerto Rico, Guam, and the Virgin Islands are involved. The United States Postal Service, National Association of Letter Carriers, National Rural Letter Carriers Association, AFL-CIO, United Way, Valisis, Valpak Direct Marketing Systems, CVS Health, Kellogg's, and United Food, and Commercial Workers International Union are all supporting this year's Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. To donate, just place a box or can of nonperishable food next to your mailbox before your letter carrier delivers mail on the second Saturday in May. The carrier will do the rest. The food is sorted and delivered to an area food bank or pantry where it is available for needy families. One in eight Americans face hunger every day in America. This drive is one way you can help those in your city or town who need help. That being said, I believe, Brandy?
Mm-hmm.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to come up and say a few words about this?
Not really.
Oh, okay.
This is Brandy Shaw, and she is a Maryville mail carrier, and she approached me with an idea to try to help spread the word this year so that we can educate everybody that Saturday, May 13th is the food drive. But Brandy, I'll let you speak to it.
I have a couple statistics about hunger in America. More than 34 million Americans struggle with food insecurity. Food insecurity means living at risk of hunger and not knowing where the next meal is going to come from. Almost 9 million children are living in a food insecure household. Some experience developmental issues, language and motor skills, social and behavioral problems. Nearly 5.2 million seniors currently face hunger in our country. That's 1 in 15 seniors who face hunger. Households who seek assistance live at or below the federal poverty level. The federal poverty level for a family of four is $27,750. So the food drive is super important, and especially to know that all the food donated here in Maryville goes to your local Ross Township food pantry. It doesn't get sent into anybody else's community. It goes to whatever community you live in. You know, my family had to use it years ago when I was younger, and it was very embarrassing for my parents. It's hard to ask for help when you need it, but everyone is kind of one paycheck away from not knowing what might happen next time. You know, you want to think that your job might be secure, but you never really know what's going on today. So it is important just to set out something, anything. If everybody set out one can, let's say, in Maryville, we might have 30,000 deliveries in Maryville. If everyone set out one can of food in their mailbox, that's a whole lot of food, and we don't get that much. So that would be great if everyone would participate and help out their neighbor.
That being said, Mr. President, Steve, I believe we have, we used to have banners that went across Broadway on the north end and right out here, if I'm not mistaken. Do you still have those, Steve? Or can you check on those with N.D.O.T.?
I can't. We have all kinds of banners.
All right. Okay. Let's get those two out, and then it goes without saying, Mr. President, that Lamar's commitment on space-available advertising, I've already checked into digital, so Brandy, between you and Rick. Rick's going to get me some artwork, and Lamar will post that on our digital billboards throughout town when it's available.
Thank you so much.
Also on top of that, Ms. Shine, we're going to share the artwork with you to share with area businesses who operate the digital signs in town, and as you know, those businesses have agreed to put town messages on their billboards for us.
Yep.
So we'll get that also posted. Then next meeting, we'll have a proclamation declaring the pickup date and the times for the residents to participate.
Thank you.
All right.
One thing, Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway.
For Steve, if you can't find those banners, then get with Councilman Douglas, and let's get those, let's get some new banners made.
Okay.
So that we can get them stretched out.
Yeah, I'll look in the morning, and we'll see if we can find them.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Shaw shared their logo, the Stamp Out Hunger. We're all wearing your buttons. Thank you for those. And we'll get some signage up around town buildings also, the community center especially. A lot of foot traffic in there, and will remind residents to participate this year.
Appreciate it very much.
But your stats about hunger is right on. I was with Feeding America for 15 years and bought fresh produce for 200 food banks across the country. The need is there, and the thing about hunger is, it could be your next-door neighbor. You're not going to know anything about it. So that's the thing about hunger. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we'll do what we can to help.
Thanks for the time.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Anything else under your committee?
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to just give a quick report on how the CDC determined what Lake County was doing this day. Of course, the numbers are still fluid as far as I'm concerned. We're still at a low level here. Just don't know what level it is. Are we all getting better because of the vaccinations? Is that keeping things counted down a little bit, I'm sure to a certain extent? So our level with the national CDC states that Lake County is in a low level, and I think that that's where we need to stay. But I also would like to say that we need to start planning again for maybe the next pandemic. Hopefully, we don't have another one. I'm not certain the President of, I'm sorry, the President of the United States said it was over with. I'm not certain that's the case. Additionally, I talked to Pat, what was that, a couple of days ago, Pat?
Yes.
International researchers had said that they traced back that start of the, they called it the Wuhan virus, but they traced it back to a dog and it became a raccoon dog. Yeah, they got a raccoon dog out there. Actually, I think you've seen that as well, Pat. And, you know, their diet consists of...
Ingy-looking thing.
Right, looked like an Ingy thing. Their diet in China consists of some of those type of animals. So I just wanted to let people know, initially, they said it came from a bat, then initially, you know, then a second, they thought it might have came out of the lab. Now they're saying it's this raccoon dog that is responsible, not that particular raccoon dog, but that species that is responsible for the spread of this COVID virus. So, one thing I can say, stay strong, keep vaccinated. I haven't heard them recently saying we want third vaccinations, booster shots, but if you feel that you need to do that, I wouldn't stop you from doing. That's it in environmental affairs. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Yeah, quickly, Mr. President. Sean, next week, we call an executive session with the Community Center Committee and Personnel to discuss personnel staff in the community center, 5 o'clock.
What date?
Executive session, Pat.
Yes, sir, I wrote that.
What date is that, Rich?
That's Tuesday.
All right.
Tuesday. We've got the RDC at 6:15. We should be able to accomplish everything between 5:00 and 6:15. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
We'll have ordinance 2313 later on in the agenda.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Parks and Recreations, Mrs. Uszalak.
No report at this time, but the parks are being kept in order by the public works. They are all cleaned up, and in spring here, the children are more than welcome to use them at this time. Thank you.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Dean of Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Rich covered the executive session. Other than that, no report.
Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Yes, Mr. President. The 12th committee met this past Thursday. They will meet again this coming Thursday at 12 noon. Anyone from the community that's in the rest and serving on this committee is welcome to be. Will it be here again, Mrs. Shine? It's here at Town Hall, 12 o'clock, back in the conference room. That's my report.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Do we have an update on the diversity committee? Is it you guys doing it, or is that pretty much a wrap? I haven't heard of...
No, it's never going to be a wrap, Mr. White.
Well, I still need to hear about it.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Waiting.
Anything else, Mr. Hardaway?
That's it, Mr. President.
All right.
So, Mr. President? We don't have a report for diversity, is that correct?
No, we don't. We're actually talking right now to a retired school teacher who helped us in the past about doing a special program for the town. We have no further details yet, but as soon as Mr. Hardaway and I finish up the meeting with him, we'll let you know. Did you have some ideas to share?
Well, no, I'm just saying that as part of the reporting and stuff, I just wanted to know if there was any updates on how we're going, but since you just kind of explained a little bit, just keep us informed.
Well, we sure will.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to Department and Commission Reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held my first solid waste district meeting of the year, of course, I was out because of injuries earlier in the year. And basically, one of the things we discussed was paying $188,000 for the damage that had happened at the solid waste district. So what they did, they did get a check from the insurance company for $188,000, so that's starting to be repaired over there. Secondly, we had a personnel-type situation, whereas they wanted to do a resolution to amend the Personnel Policy Manual, and I just didn't think that we had enough information, so I called for them to table it, and the board did grant me that table until we can find out exactly when we could put something side by side where we can evaluate it. That didn't happen. I think some guys from some of the other communities made that clear, like, we really don't know what's going on here, but we trust. Now, I can also tell you that the district director did send out an email, that's right, I believe, kind of pretty much stating why they made those changes and why they wanted to amend it, whereas we didn't have that before. And after I looked at it, I'm almost pretty much in agreement with that resolution, and I will ask at the next solid waste district board meeting that we'll go ahead and approve that. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Stormwater Management Resources, our director is Matt Lake.
Yeah, real quick, we had our CRS five-year cycle visit, and it was a mountain of paperwork. I'll submit it on the new online system to FEMA, so we'll let them review it, supply any additional information they request, and go from there. We're also finalizing our MS4 annual report to IDM, so I sent you actually a form today to sign, and just I'll get that back. I could send it out later this week and stay in compliance with them. We also received our $144,000 for our Community Development Block Grant from Arcella Road. So again, I want to thank the Lake County Economic Development for that. We also, I signed a notice to proceed today to Gulf Construction for the Kaiserditch lateral. All the materials are in. That's what they were waiting for, so these will be all the crossings from US 30 to 73rd Avenue, just east of Taney Road, or west of Taney Road. Sent a couple of applications for grants for the Hickory Ridge Lake apartment. One was the Little Cal, and the other one was a 219 grant. So hopefully, that will blend together to cover 100% of the funding for that particular project. And Dire Construction was a low bidder on the Grassfield subdivision, 9401 Randolph Street drainage project, in the amount of $232,356.03. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
And Mr. White.
Yes, this is for Matt. Matt, I gave you a call the other day. I didn't understand that you was on vacation at the time. Sorry for disturbing you.
Still am.
Oh, sorry. Dedicated guy. Hey, I was just wanting to go over a little bit with the conversation that you and I had, because I got more calls, and I think I even woke Pat up at night. He called me Dracula because I was up at 10 o'clock sending him emails, but those were the same emails I got. And once I got them, I'm like, this is just irritable for me, and this is what people are saying. So honestly, I did not know you was on vacation. You could have probably told me that. Then I want to ask you to go over there and look at that situation. But what I am asking is that when you come off vacation, can you get with me? Actually, I'm going to go out there with all three of you guys, so we can look at this, because people need to understand that they are not being there. So we can look at this, because people need to understand that they are not being neglected because of whatever reason. We need those drains over there. Those people are swimming in mud. And I've said things about this quite a few times, actually, and nothing's going on. So do I need to make a motion saying, give me $5 million so we can get that done, or?
You should probably attend one of the board meetings for the Stormwater Management District.
Well...
Because we can't make that decision here.
I'm just saying, what is it? Well, they work for us though, right?
Well, the board doesn't, yeah.
So Matt, I'm not going to ask you for $2 million, because it's just not... The drainage issue was, and some of that's just straight up infrastructure, period. But since the President asked for me to attend more of those meetings, when is your next one?
First Tuesday of the month.
Okay, so when you see me there, you know I'm going to be asking for some dollars, right?
What's that?
When you see me at the next meeting, you know I'm going to be asking for some dollars. So can you kind of just tell your board that's what I'm coming there for?
Yeah, I did send you pictures too of the area.
Sure.
People are parking in the grass areas, and that's creating ruts.
Sure.
So that's really a big problem out there.
Yep.
There's no curb or gutter, so it's just old school drainage. And so I think, I don't know if, we passed an ordinance with regards to not off-street parking. I thought it was more like, don't block the sidewalk, or was it off-street parking?
Right.
It almost seems to me like we need to extend that a little bit into, don't park in, you know, in the grass areas.
Well, there's no parking allowed on grass in any...
Well, that's what's happening out there anyways. That's causing a lot of rutting and causing security issues.
You know, Mr. President?
Actually, Costa can help you with that, yeah.
The area.
I think with the population in Maryville increasing tremendously, that's why you're seeing like five and six cars at some of those homes, because you have that many people live there. But they all don't have parking places. And then what do they park at? On the grass. Then what happens? It creates ruts. Then what do I hear from? Why is our community looking like this? So we have to find a way to either be a... How many cars do we allow our community, a home to have out there if they don't fit in the driveway? I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I will attend the next board meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. Approximately two weeks ago, the South Shore Convention Visitors Authority hosted a meeting in Crown Point under new President and CEO Uran. We're trying to move things around. It was in Crown Point, of course, he's former mayor there. It was a great setting. It's a new venue. The point I want to make is, while there were other dignitaries present, Senator Melton was present, and he was the featured speaker. He gave us an update as to the status of, well, he referenced the food and beverage tax. He really focused on where we're at with the idea of a convention center. And he answered a lot of questions. He did a great job in his presentation. What I walked out of that room with is two ideas. One, that the decision as to where a convention center would go is competitive. There's going to be a laundry list, if you will, of criteria that each and every community will need to meet for consideration. And that fact alone will rule out many, many communities countywide. The second is that there's discussion amongst we board members with South Shore to take this study that I believe Councilman Pettit, what, two, it's two, three years old?
Oh, it's older than that. It was before the pandemic.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there you have it, to update that study. We feel there's a lot of very important information in that study. That study would then be used to help guide the decision. And as normal, the council can look for circulars and publications of upcoming events at the chamber. And Authority, thank you.
Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Span.
They have no meetings scheduled currently.
Department reports, Ms. Shaw, Planning and Building Department.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like, with the arrival of spring coming, I'd like to take this opportunity to please remind the residents of the importance of pulling a permit when they're getting their work done on their homes. Also, please be wary of giving down payments to contractors without checking with us to see if they are licensed in the town of Maryville. We have many people who have given down payments, and then the contractor does not return. And then they call us, and I say, no, ma'am, they're not licensed. A couple of times, I've been able to track down the company to help. But it's so important that they remember the importance of calling with the Planning and Building Department, checking to see if their contractor is licensed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King, anything to add from the Street Department?
A couple of things here. Our spring cleanup is coming up. The spring newsletter has gone out to the residents. We will start with the leaf collection. That's going to be the week of April 10th. All Maryville residents who live north of 73rd Avenue will be picking up that week. Anything south of 73rd Avenue will be the week of April 17th. We will only pick up one time due to the demands on our staff. That's all we're allotted to do. Residents can bring leaves and branches to our facility at 5750 Tyler, Monday through Friday, from 7:15 to 2:45. Also, we will have dumpsters available for residents during our spring cleanup. That, the dumpsters are going to be located at 1373rd Avenue. That's our Street Department facility. The times are going to be Monday through Friday, 7:15 to 2:45. And Saturday from 8:00 to noon, the dumpsters are located in the back. We just ask that you bring a driver's license and have Indiana plates on your car. So that's it for the spring cleanup. Like I said, it's in the newsletter. Also, I just want to make a quick comment here. A lot of problems with speeders that I've heard about. Chief Nussus has heard about. I have Mr. Jim Entwistle from Traffic Logics is coming April 4th. He'll be in my office. Costa, if you want to come down, I'll send you an invite to that to talk about getting some, ordering some speed humps to kind of slow this traffic down. He'll be there, like I said, April 4th. So if anybody, you know, want to call, let me know what problem areas, we can start addressing these things and getting this traffic slowed down. Also, I want to make a comment about Tracy Ryan. Tracy was, is our foreman at the Street Department. She was promoted in January. She's our first female foreman there. She's done a fantastic job. And Chaz Riley has done an article on her. I think it hit the newspaper a couple of days ago. She was actually on the front page. And I believe that should be up on our website too, isn't it, about the article? So, Rhea, it's a great article. She's doing a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Chief Costa.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements I want to make tonight. I'm actually kind of happy about this, because we've taken a lot of work and a lot of pride into doing one of them, actually both of them. First announcement I want to make is that we have gone live with online reporting. So if you have an incident that you would like to report to the police, you don't want the police coming to your house, or if you don't have the time to do it, you will now have the option of doing online reporting. The way that this is going to be done is going to be done via, it's going to be smartphone friendly. It is PC friendly. And we're working on getting a tablet outside here to have a kiosk in front of the police station. So those who do not have a phone, they don't have a, or smartphone, rather, they don't have a computer, they can have access to come here and do one of those online reporting reports as well. We're also working on getting QR codes. Those who aren't familiar with QR codes, it's basically a little barcode that you can scan with a smartphone, and it allows you and gives you a link to the actual reporting site. That's something that we're going to work on. We're going to get business cards. We're going to post, put, hand them out to people. We're also going to try and get it online on our website. So this is something that we have been working on since late last summer, possibly early fall, and it's taken a long time. I started it, and then I have to commend Assistant Chief Josh Gonzalez. He took it and ran with it and got it completed. So this has been a long time coming, so I'm happy to announce that. The second thing I want to announce is we are working on putting together a meet and greet type workshop with the police and the general public, or the public or the citizens of Maryville. We're looking at doing this at either late spring, early summer. The intention of this is to meet the people of Maryville. Let the people of Maryville get to know who we are as the police officers. Oftentimes, people see us as just somebody in a uniform. Once they get to talk to us and we get to talk to them, it's different. We build, you know, we have a dialogue. We build a rapport. And I think that's something fantastic that each and every police department needs to do. We want to pass out information to the public. We want to pass out information to the residents of Maryville. We want to give everybody a chance to speak. Let us know what the problems are that they're having. Let us know if there's something that they like that we're doing. So there's very few of us. There's not enough police officers in America to patrol everywhere. But when you have the community on board as a team, it makes your police department so much stronger, and it makes the community so much safer. So this is something that we've been really trying to get together. And we're hoping to announce a date. And I'm going to have to get with you, Terrence, because we're looking at doing it at the Dean and Barbara White Center. That's all.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Okay. Chief, you know, you and I have communicated a little bit over the past three or four days. Again, I would like to publicly, I want to say congratulate you in terms of how I'm seeing a different stance from the police department. I'm really seeing these guys out there, and that's what I've been looking for. They look like they're a little menace, and that's what I've been looking for the entire time. And I know they're on their job now, because you go down 61st Avenue, and people fly right past that speech, and we got, well, they were kind of pacing themselves that day. And those guys didn't fly past. So I just wanted to let you know that I think you're doing well. I think your guys are doing well, and we want to keep seeing that. And just wanted to let the rest of the council know. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Span.
Yes, I would like to thank the Maryville Police Department. For the home entertainment I had. The camera on my door caught six squad cars chasing this car. He went through my, between the curb and the sidewalk and left his tracks. He didn't come back out without a police escort. They did a great job.
Thank you.
It was like amazing video or something. I can't describe it, but it was... I play it every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very much.
Parks and recreations, Terrence Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we hosted United States, State of Indiana Gymnastics Meet. That was held at our center. It was a great success. They came from Denver, Colorado. Like I said, it was a great event. Have a chance to watch that, watch the performances, things that go like that. They've already reached out to schedule next year again to make this an annual event there at the community center. A week before that, we had hosted our MMA fight. Our headliner, who was a Maryville grad, brought an amazing crowd, put on an amazing performance, and won. So that was really good also. That concluded most of our events here for the month of March. So hopefully the weather stays consistent and get more sunshine. We'll start looking to get more grass mowed here for the upcoming spring.
Great. Thank you, Terrence. Moving on tonight to general orders. We have first reading ordinance, ordinance 23-13. It's an ordinance to the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the various fire protection territory funds for the year 2023, which were not included in the current budget. We're looking at fire department repair parts. The amount is $75,000.
I can comment on that if you like, sir.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yeah, I had a talk with the Assistant Chief Lilly earlier today. This was on one of their ladder trucks. They had an unexpected repair. That was pretty costly, as you can see. So they wanted to make room in the budget so they can make it through the year and including making this repair.
Very good. Do you have a motion, Mr. Minchuck, for us?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Hardaway, for approval on first reading ordinance 23-13. Is there anything to add, Trista?
Excuse me. While Mr. Sander is the financial advisor to the fire department, this is a resolution that was prepared directly by their staff. And so Mr. Minchuck has all the information to provide to you.
Appears to be in order.
Mr. President?
Mr.?
Go ahead.
Trista, and to Jeff, since this is a repair to an existing piece of equipment, this is an additional appropriation. Can we suspend after first reading and get this so they can get this thing paid for?
Then we got to advertise.
We do have to advertise, Trista? All right, never mind.
Appropriation, yeah.
I thought so, but...
It's not a transfer, yeah.
To pay for the repair, so it's, is it trucked down, Jeff?
They have money already in the repaired line. This will just replenish it.
Replenish it, all right.
They do have cash.
So long as they get it repaired.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yes. Doesn't the Ross Township, are they part of the fire protection territory?
What do you mean, Leonard? I don't understand your question.
Is the Ross Township...
The trustee's office?
Yes. Aren't they part of the fire territory?
They're on the board.
They're on the board?
Yeah.
So do we give, does the trustee give any dollars to the board?
No, the fire department funding flows through the town of Maryville.
The reason I was asking that, because when it says appropriating additional monies from various fire protection funds and stuff, I just wanted to know, what was the various, how much was it? And why was it not included in the current budget? Probably because they didn't see the needs at the time, but...
It's an emergency repair, right. There was no way to really budget for it.
So how much are we looking at on that, Trista?
$75,000.
$75,000. And that's going to take care of the repairs?
Yeah, it's going to replenish, I believe. The repairs were $75,000. This additional appropriation will replenish the repair fund.
Okay, that's, no additional questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? We have a motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Hardaway. Roll call, please.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uszak?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes. Seven zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to one resolution on the agenda. It's a resolution to the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the 2023 budget. General Fund Department Two and Department Seven, within the 2023 budget, Parks Nonreverting Fund. Trista, we might need some help with this.
Sure. The budget had been set up so that the IT Director, which was hopeful in the fall to have been hired by January, would be paid as an employee from the payroll lines. In the 100 series, you see their line 141. Same situation with the content manager in the fall. It had been budgeted as a payroll, as expected to be a part-time employee. Both of those, I guess, humans that are providing those services currently to the town are as contractual services, not as actual employees of the town. And so thus far, the contractual line, the third line listed on each of those two, is where they have been paid to date. It makes more sense for each of them to be in their own contractual services line, which is why you see a second entry listed for you, which is simply moving the budget from the payroll line to a contractual service line so that they can be paid from that contractual service line going forward. The amounts you see that are being listed on the transfer are simply a quarter of the overall budget. Because of where we are at this point in the year, because of the amounts of money that have been spent so far, there was no sense yet transferring the entire amount out of payroll in case you as a council still come during the year still come during the year to hire a person as an employee directly for either of those spots. If come the summer or the fall, either of these people providing the service are still as contractual work, you simply can transfer some more money as needed to that line. You'll see so far, not much has been needed for either one. But the amounts transferred into the second contractual line, again, are to reimburse to that line what's been spent. And then, secondly, the Parks Department, very identical situation. It was budgeted for payroll as the IT director. It is being paid as a contractual service, and so this is the amount that is suggested to transfer at this point in time to pay them out of that contractual service line.
Thank you, Trista. Joey, anything else to add? Anything to add from your office?
No, no, sir.
Chair Lynn entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Usalak, for approval of Resolution 23-08. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan. We have a final vote of record for the AP voucher register summary for the AP ARP purchases for March 14th. Evidently, I believe Mr. White asked a question during discussion, right before we voted, and we never actually voted. Is that right, Pat?
That's correct.
And so we need to correct the record and actually vote on that. So I entertain a motion to approve the voucher for the March 14th voucher.
Motion to approve, I don't remember the exact dollar amount.
We don't think we need that, do we, Joe? Yep.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Pettit, to approve the, the record AP voucher register summary for March 14th. Questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Sorry I threw everybody off. We didn't want to vote. That's kind of not the way I'm.
No, no, it wasn't your fault. I was just explaining what had happened.
Okay.
We were getting ready to vote, and then you had a last minute question, and we answered the question, and then we never went back and actually voted.
Okay. So I'm still asking as to the use of the American Rescue Plan dollars. I think that I had asked, and I'm not approaching this the right way, because, you know, you guys are the professionals when it comes to moving these things on the agenda. I was still wondering, is we going to, do I have to make a motion to get some of these dollars to do some different type of study for young African-American women and babies dying? I think I'm, you know, because I looked at the data, it's now it's nationwide. I'm actually seeing it on PBS TV, that northwest Indiana is one of the highest places for black women and infant mortality in the nation. So we just can't sit here. I know I won't sit here. And, you know, this is government dollars. I just think we need to find a way, I don't know if it comes through the Environmental Affairs Department or what, but we need to find a way to find out what's going on with these, these people here. See a lot of other deaths out there, just put in the newspaper, but this is like something that they, you know, they keep putting under the cover. So I am asking this council, is there dollars going to be available with federal dollars to use some of those federal dollars to do a study as to find out what's going on with these people that's dying here? If there's another way to do it, then I'm open to any suggestions, but that's my question again.
I think that what I would suggest, Mr. White, is have you reached out to the Lake County Health Department to see if they have any statistics on what you're talking about here in the Maryville area?
I haven't reached out to them because, you know, when we went through our COVID situation, they weren't very helpful. They wouldn't even answer the phone.
Well, during COVID, so many people weren't helpful. They didn't know what was going on. But this seems like has been something going on for decades. So maybe, maybe they have something, maybe. I would suggest, you're asking.
Sure if they got some, yes.
I would say start there. Yeah, you never know.
Well, yeah.
Would you mind looking into that before you go back to the council, and then we can talk about.
I appreciate, you know, moving it. Yes. Thank you for that suggestion.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
We've got, no problem. We have to vote again.
I did it again.
You did. It was the same subject.
All in favor of approving the March 14th voucher, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion now carries. Moving on to the AP voucher, the current one, for the purchases for March 28th, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's voucher bonus, $28,296.50. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of the voucher at $28,296.50. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries. Do we have any large BZA or large gathering actions tonight, Ms. Sheila?
No, sir, Mr. President.
Is there any old business before the council? Is there any new business before the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I would just like to make a statement actually to the audience, because I know we talk all the time, and it doesn't seem to be moving the ball here. I would like to let them know that when we have elections, this is not the only election we have here on this council. There's additional elections. Now, we had one today you guys don't know anything about. Actually, I did ask for, even though I supported you, he didn't support me. It's okay. I'm used to it. But I just want to say that the public needs to be acutely aware, or even chronically aware, that when you have these meetings, and I am a representative of Ward Seven, I mean, people might not like it, but none of my white colleagues ever vote for me. And I'm just figuring out, how does that happen in this country here? How does that happen? Right here. How does that happen? Right, same thing I'm wondering. So I would just say in the future, with a future council, that we be fair to everybody, because that's not happening right now. And it looks bad. It don't look bad for me, because you're losing something there, because I have multiple experiences that I'm not even able to put on the table. I mean, solid waste tissue is good. COVID stats is okay, but that's not who Leonard is. So I just want to say, when we talk about diversity, I'm not going to say anything about Richard Hardaway. I'm saying this to you guys, because you think that, because you say, well, we'll give it to one of them that looks like them. And I'm not trying to say this, no, no.
Mr. White, you need to change your tone a little bit.
Point of order, point of order.
It could possibly be because, you know, we.
Point of order, Mr. President. Mr. Point of order, this is.
You know, you've been on several committees. You've actually quit two committees this year.
Sure, sure. I mean, those committees that don't do anything.
I don't know how you gather support from your fellow council members when you show that you're not interested, you don't attend meetings, you're very often uninformed when it comes to a certain topic.
Absolutely. I mean, let's tell, let's tell the whole truth, Mr. President. You guys have.
That has something to do with it, and not necessarily color. So I'm not going to go there, because that's not.
Well, I'm going there because.
Well, you can't.
I can.
That's fine.
Only thing I'm saying is that when you say I'm never at meetings, because I don't know about them most of the time.
Oh, Mr. White, you know that every meeting is advertised. You're notified, Linda, I'm not even going to sit here and let you talk about.
I am not talking about those.
You are notified about every meeting.
I'm talking about the ones you guys do behind the scenes.
We're not doing any meetings behind any scenes, okay? So I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. I know what I'm talking about. However, some of the meetings, since we got this out here, Mr. President, some of the meetings that you're paying other people to attend, I don't get those payments. Your other council committee, committee, sorry, committee members, they get a stipend. I haven't got a stipend in almost three years. So when they attend like a board of Public Works, or BZAs, or other $50 stipends, I have not had those opportunities for three years. So it's not just me. And if you want me to attend stuff, you're going to have to give me some dollars. I mean, it do cost me a little bit to get up here. Gas went up, by the way. So I just want to make that statement. I know me and you kind of go back and forth, but it's nothing of me trying to be disrespectful for this, to this council. It's just a fact.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business before us? Public comment. Does any public comment tonight? Please approach the podium and state your name and address. He's going to have to wait right now, though.
No problem.
Okay.
I'm back. Ned Adoti, 1134 West 72nd Court. I need to know what's going to happen with all this standing water behind my house, behind my shed. During the summertime, it's been there. The wintertime look like an ice capé, and it's still there. And my house looks like a third war, like we're in Haiti somewhere. It is disastrous over there. It's ugly. Mr. Minchuck, have you been back there and took, taken a walk to see what's going on back there?
Is it coming from the construction site?
Yes, it is. See, you would know if you would have been back there. It's really bad. That standing water is bad, and I've been up here several times. This ain't the first time. Y'all should know me by now. And I'm tired of fighting, but I'm going to keep fighting till it's right. My house looks horrible. And I hate to look out my back door, even open up my window, because it looks like a disaster area, like a bomb dropped. It's horrible. And I can't, you can't say they're not working, because they are working. They done paved a whole little walkway. Looks nice on that other end, but what about my end?
I'll check it out.
Please do.
Got it.
Uh huh.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Rhonda Neal, 2958 West 65th Avenue, Maryville. This is for the chief. You talked about your, the online reporting and the QR code, which I think is an excellent idea. Everybody liked it. So I jotted down a lot of notes. I just wanted to give one suggestion that I think would be great, so that it's spread out across the town very well. Maybe to do like a one-time mailer with the information on how people go about accessing the online reporting on their phones and with their QR code. So at least we can just do like a one blanket, spread out, so that everybody is aware of that information, because I really like that idea. And also your meeting greet, too, that you're also planning.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Span, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Any other public comment? Moving on to announcements. We have the Plan Commission Workshop, April 4th at 6:30, and the next town council meeting is April 11th at 6:30.
Personnel and RDC.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.